Good evening, everyone. The time is now six P M. and the Spring Lake Board of Commissioners work session is now called to order. I ask that if you do have a cell phone, you place it on silent or turn it off so that we are not disturbing the work of the town. I would like to invite Pastor Chandler to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and invocation. Please stand and join us if you choose to. Pastor Long, you want to do a sound?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let us now pray. God, we thank you for you being faithful. We appreciate you, oh God. We realize that we could do nothing right without you. We thank you all for all these additions who seek to make this town better, Lord, working on behalf of the citizens, Lord, and striving to do what's right. Oh God, please give us the wisdom to do what you would have us to do. We pray these things in the name of our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Let us now recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pastor Long. Now we will prompt for any additions or deletions to the agenda. The first thing we need to do is under seven, B and C, we're going to switch those. So B will be C and C will be B. Are there any other additions or deletions? Saying now I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Mayor Roten, Commissioner Poxios.
Say it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm now entertaining a motion to approve the consent items of the draft minutes of the October fourteenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting and our quarterly reports, December one, twenty twenty four. Commissioner Chatham.
So we're not.
Commissioner Lackman.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll now move on to our public comments. I would like to remind you that you have a full of three minutes speaking. And again, please keep your conversations to a minimum so that the presenter can speak directly to the board. Our first person off the agenda is Mr. Michael Crocker, which I do not see present. So we will move on to Mr. Wilbur Graham. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Wilbur Graham. I'm in ten twelve Karen Circle, Spring Lake, North Carolina. I'm here this afternoon to just talk about the cemetery located off of eighty-seven, addition to Chapel Hill Road. I've been out there and there's an exposed coffin that's over there. I don't know if you saw it in the news, but anyway, it's there. It also was undergrowth over knee-high. And so I went over to see what we could do to help. And so far, everybody's been really, really helpful, including the city, the mayor, Mayor Protem, and other folks that's in the political arena. We've got some film directors that sent us to try to figure out how to do that. Currently, it's being cleaned off. If you go by there now, you'll really see it looks like a cemetery. All graves will be identified. There will be a marker on each grave, at least letting us know that there's a grave there. And I was mostly concerned, I'm a thirty-year Army retired Command Star Major, and it upset me to see veterans all the way back to World War Two, Korea, Vietnam that was there. And then, and so we got that taken care of. And all the grave markers will be standing up and corrected in there. So I'm in support of the Bethel A and E Zion Church, who will take the lead to get this done. And on the seventeenth of November, we will have a fundraiser at three P M. over at the Bethel A and E in order to set up a perpetual care fund that might be able to keep the cemetery up. Any questions?
No, we're not allowed to ask questions on public comments, but thank you so much. And Pastor Long, would you please come back to the podium? Take your name and address for the record.
Vincent Long, located at one oh one Marchmont Place, Cameron, North Carolina. And I speak on behalf of Bethel A and E Zion Church. And Mr. Wilbur has already brought up the issue of which I'm speaking about. And I appreciate the opportunity to address this body now rise to bring attention to the matter concerning Hillside Cemetery located here in the town of Spring Lake. As you may or may not be aware of, some upkeep issues were recently highlighted by the media. Although some matters referenced are easily rectifiable, as Mr. Wilbur has already addressed, others are not, as there are unseen complexities involved. I would have you know that a community effort has now ensued to immediately address the easily addressable issues. However, for some of the other matters, we would solicit the input and the assistance of this board to the extent possible to aid in their resolution. Please note that as it relates to this matter, it is our sole intention to do justice to the memory of and the lives of the persons who are now resting in Hillside Cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pastor. All right, we will now move on to our presentations, beginning with our Veterans Day proclamation, which is attached to the agenda. And again, for the sake of term, I won't read that, but we definitely want to make sure that we are honoring our veterans this upcoming November. Can't remember the exact date.
November eighth.
November eighth, Veterans Day. And I know Commissioner Lackman and Commissioner Poxios will have some additional updates about that amazing day to honor our veterans as well. We have three sitting veterans right here on our board. Commissioner Lackman, Commissioner Thompson, who is out sick, and myself are all veterans. We have veterans right here in our audience. If you're a veteran, just wave your hand for us so we'll know who you are. Thank you for your service. And just know that the town of Spring Lake honors you in your service to our country. All right, so we will move on now to agenda item B, which is the AIA M R F. David Honeycutt, our principal office manager from McGill Associates, please first.
Thank you. Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to the board this evening. And David Honeycutt, McGill Associates, the office manager in the Palmer's office just over the hill there. But so, and I've got a presentation that's an update on a large piece of work that we're doing for the town as an asset inventory assessment, merger regionalization. There's actually kind of two separate pieces there, work that we're doing. So I've formatted.
You can use the clicker.
Oh, is there a clicker up here? So I've formatted this overall just to try to, again, it's a fairly large amount of work that I'm trying to keep my presentation within a reasonable amount of time. So I'm going to go fairly quickly, but generally, I want to talk first about just what our overall project scope is. I'm going to talk some about what the work we've completed thus far, show you some of the results and the investigations that we've done there, current status, and then talk through what the upcoming work, what those next steps look like. And as I say, it is kind of a two separate parts that are tied together within the scope of work. The first piece of it is inventory and assessment of it. The scope within that includes doing, looking through your existing mapping records of the water and sewer systems, doing field inspections of the system, trying to get a better understanding of what the existing system is. And it's an assessment inventory, trying to know the quality, the condition, and the inventory, how many linear feet of pipe you have, what types of pipe are out there, what types of for both water and sewer systems, and the assets that you have at the wastewater treatment plant. Overall, to get as good of an understanding as we can in from records and field investigation of that. A lot of that is buried out in the streets, under the streets, et cetera. So there's only some of it we can do, we can see some of it we can't. The field inspections, we've used GPS location to map manholes and map water valves, map your fire hydrants. We are scheduled to, not completely yet, but to do flow monitoring in multiple places within the system, which will help us to know how much water, how much sewer is coming through different parts of the sewer system compared to what we would expect from just typical sewer flows. That gives us an idea of infiltration and inflow or leakage within the system. We have already completed smoke testing howling the system. The fire truck was on poles a few times. Into that work, but that investigation was looking at also trying to find infiltration and inflow of water that's coming into your sewer system that shouldn't be making its way in the sewer system. And then also on the sewer, we did video inspection work, putting a camera down through the sewer line, seeing what the pipes look like there. So then our scope there, I also have looking at treatment plant and the pump station assessment. It's going to have the individual components of each of those systems. And flipping to the water side of the system, we have a water modeling effort, which is a computer model where we utilize that map information, put it into a model, and helps us to be able to assess the system, the water system's performance. So if we look at the performance from hybrid testing information for the system, pressure monitoring from the actual measurements, fair enough to the computer model, to see what, to calibrate that model and to try to utilize that as a tool for planning for the system and to again assess that, what performance of the water system overall. And the results of that, we've got this, that accumulates into an asset condition and a value summary assessment of what the overall system value is there. From, in addition to that, and we also do have merger regionalization component to this, which is looking at the potential for Spring Lake to work with other partners, such as P M D C, Harnett County, or Cumberland County, include both physical alternatives, such as pumping to their systems or to governance type options. And I'll talk more about those in a future slide there. And then the last piece of that is pulling all this together into financial analysis of the system. So we utilize that data, understanding of the components of your system to say, what capital improvements do you need to be looking to complete over the next ten years? And looking at how your mechanisms that those improvements can be funded. How can we work, look at what rate adjustments might be needed to do that? And also system development fees, which I'll get into more exactly what that is down in further into the presentation as well. And then from all that, we'll wrap that all into a nice report and present the presenter back to the board with our final. So we're working our way through this effort right now. So we're at, I'm not sure what percentage was we're at, probably in the fifty percent range, I would say. So I've got some information as we move forward and through, I'll show you what we've got. I've got some kind of, I'll say, not predictions exactly, but some general information where I see things going within the information that we've found thus far, documents reviewed thus far. And then we've got to go through the next pieces. So your systems overall, as I thought, I'll talk a little about what we've completed already so far. Breaking into sewer collection system, the treatment plant, and the water distribution system. Those are kind of your three main components of the water sewer infrastructure for the town. So, and we did do manhole inspections and mapping. We had a certain number of days out of the system, so we did not map every single manhole in the system. But we were able to get a pretty good cross-section and quite a good number of manholes overall mapped. We looked at each manhole. We did map an open lid, documented materials, the diameter, the depths, the pipes coming in and out of that manhole so that that was in a G I S based system that the town has access to and can utilize for future records. I've shown a couple of examples of manholes that are out in the, these are actually from Spring Lake's collection system. I picked a couple of just to give you an idea of what we've got. But one to the left there is a block manhole with a clay pipe coming through. That's some of the oldest sewer in the town is using that block type material for construction of the manhole. Top one on the right is a brick manhole with a clay line coming in and out of that. And then at the bottom right, you actually have a precast manhole. Something to note in that, actually, is the precast manhole, well, you can see it there, but actually has quite a bit of root intrusion. And boy, that was installed, a lot of the mess coming in on the right is roots that are trying to grow through the side of that manhole. So there's, although that is the most recent manhole of the pictures I've seen, even a recent construction can have challenges in that. It's basically just because of poor insulation and there are other issues there.
What are the ages on those manholes?
The block manhole, I believe, would be probably in the sixty to seventy years old. Block and brick are both used in that kind of timeframe. Brick, and the bricks would estimate in that is, at most recent, is probably forty years old, but probably more than that. And then precast is typically, it has been used in the last thirty years or so, about thirty-five years.
Would all of these should be, should have been replaced?
The brick and the block definitely are at the end of their useful life or past the end of their useful life. The precast there really could be rehabilitable, maybe cleaned up and patched correctly probably without having to be replaced in that particular one. And that's not to say that all of the precast manholes look like this. It's just a re that I picked out of the system. But yes, that is typically, there's a lot of, and actually I'll. It's talking about pipes. So there's a lot of clay pipe and concrete pipe all in the system still. So in video inspection work, we were not able to get a tremendous amount of footage that we wanted because we're slow building because of the condition of the pipes. There, I've got one example there of a clay pipe that has shown root intrusion coming into the side of that. It's one of just a pick, picked out of some of the work that we were able to do there. And then to the right, I should have blown these pictures up a little more, but that's a line. It is a concrete pipe that is pretty much collapsed. That's one that we're working to replace through the Arco lines on the Maxstream particularly, which I've coupled out there. But that, unfortunately, that's typical of those older concrete pipes. And those are usually, kind of like for small land or stuff like that, concrete was some of the earliest stuff that was used, even as early as the nineteen twenties, almost a hundred years ago, up until clay came about exactly, but probably in the fifties-ish, I believe. Forty's, fifties or so, and there's some overlap in those different materials as well. But yeah, so the concrete pipe is where we certainly will be expecting to put high priorities in getting those lines done. We're seeing in current failures on those lines and there's, we're fixing a couple of small spots with Arco money, but there's a lot more out there.
Can you clarify on that Arco money, David? Were you talking about the five hundred K?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not the town's version of Arco money, it's something that came after our Arco money, okay? So our Arco money is gone.
Yeah, lots of.
This is additional Arco money from the estate in terms of the five hundred thousand.
Yes, yeah. So the other investigation work we've done is smoke testing out into the system. So that includes blowing, taking a, it's like a big lawnmower, the family on the bottom of it, blow the smoke down into the manhole and comes out in various places where water can come into the system. So if it comes out through the vents, roof vents on top of the plumbing system of the house, that's what it's supposed to do. But in a lot of cases where it found where it comes out through the ground, in this case of the example I've provided, for broken cleanouts, through the, you can't find storm drain connections and things like that that way as well. Really didn't find a lot of direct connections within the storm drains in the works we did. Kind of a lot of them cleanouts and a few other instances like this, ground smothering, other things like that, some of it as well. So that again helps us to understand that general condition. You've got something about, quick two dots, about forty-five miles of sewer overall. So although we've been trying to get a good cross-section and look at the various areas of the system, we're not looking at every single pipe, every single manhole to the extent that we can have a great, clear understanding of the complete system. We try to look at the pieces and areas and extrapolate from that to the general condition beyond that of the area. So overall, the system includes about forty-five miles of sewer lines, over a thousand manholes. You've got size for the pipe from six inch to the thirty inch and a mixture of P B C, gut iron pipe, which are the two very most frequently used currently in sewer construction, to truss pipe, clay pipe, and concrete pipe. Truss pipe was a relatively briefly used pipe type. It's kind of like a corrugated cardboard. It looks like a truss on the inside of a plastic pipe. It tends, it was used in the seventies for a little while, I believe it was. And it's, it tends to, it works fairly well, but tends to be brutal. But it's, basically, if you read that list from the right to the left, the concrete is the highest part of the gas system, clay, and truss, and again, the A P and P B C are probably in recently enough to have good useful life left in those as a technical statement. About overall, we're still fine tuning things within the mapping model, whatnot that we got, but about sixty percent of the system is probably, as it sits right now, it's going to be clay or concrete pipe. So we have well over twenty, twenty-five miles of clay and concrete pipe in the ground that is here at either past or approaching its usual life, but I mean, it should be replaced.
Did you say twenty-five mile?
Yeah, just forty, forty-five miles and sixty percent of it's.
Do you have a number per mile? If I was to change six inch concrete out of six inch P B C?
Per mile, just in, it costs per mile. Typically. I'm seeing it is about, about one point six million per mile, point five, point six million per mile for a rehab replacement type project.
I'm just doing consultant, man.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going from that too. So we are the kind of order magnitude dollars that we're headed towards. And that's obviously not something that can be done overnight, but if you're already at that point in the system, that's, we've got catching up. Yeah, so just some general notes on the treatment plant. You've got a capacity of one point five M G D. It's a relatively conventional plant, it's air duration, air patient, point of contact, post-aeration, and so discharging plants of the river. We've had flood concerns there, obviously, I'll say concerns, it has, that site has flooded in the past. Technically, according to current flood maps, it's just outside of a hundred year flood plane on the map for the majority of the plant. But again, I think we're seeing those maps show some age in some of the current storm projections and things as we see more and more hurricanes come through. It seems like really, certainly something that we are looking at within this and waiting as to how can, what did. We're looking at how that flood impacts, sorry, the plants for the future of the plants. You do have a few occasional violations. Most of those have been fairly minor in the last couple of years from one of the records that are just. But there have been some issues that are related to the equipment, the age of the system that's starting to shed a little bit within that. Just the most recent major construction out there is, was a grass project that was done in two thousand twelve. There was a clarifier added in two thousand five. The majority of the plants is back into the end of the seventies. Updates obviously since equipment replacements, maintenance, et cetera. But it's not been a lot of major work since that time. So on the water distribution system there, and we've done mapping inspections there for the valves and hydrants, the work that we can see from the bug ground. But and the challenges on the water system side of things is that it is, because everything's blow rated, we don't have a manhole to go look into to see the water pipes there, it tends to be a little harder for us to get a great feel for, to get those materials in construction, the pipes and other, so we have to look way more heavily on the older, on the existing records, mapping that was there, those kinds of things to really get that short of, short of going out there and pop all the lines, which is not in the scope right now. But the, so we have, as I said, mapped that. So if you've gone out and logged the information we can off the fire hydrants, done, and shot the valves, et cetera, taking pictures of those, which are also part of that mapping system. So as I say, as you go to that map, you can actually click on the valve and see, here's a picture of kind of installation of the edge of the road and the street signs, et cetera. They'll look at those down in the future when they're needed.
Does lead pipe identification part of the scope?
No, it's not. Y'all have been working on that effort this term, I guess.
Yeah, I just wanted to say it. It's not part of the scope. For the record, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I want the board to hear that it's not part of the AIA scope. In reality, it is an unfunded mandate coming down from the federal government. And most cities hire someone consultant wise or an engineering firm to go out and identify all these lead pipes. Town of Spring Lake did not. And our report was due literally like last week. And we are in non-compliance and completing that study. So we're continuing to work toward the end of that goal. We're talking and having discussions with the U Q., but we are moving forward. So in the future, what will happen to us is that all of our water customers will get a letter saying that we're not sure what pipe, if your pipe is lead pipe or not. So if you know, let us know. So that's why I wanted you to say that, because now that letter's going to come out in the bill, and everybody's going to go, what is this? This is all about compliance and about regulations that we're trying to follow.
Is there a reason we missed that?
I don't know why we missed that. There's a long list of reasons.
Yep. Please think of them.
Sorry.
The water distribution system, I brought a summary there. And you've not, Spring Lake does not have their own water stores. You source water from Harnett County and the P W C, which have a combined capacity through those agreements of one point two M G D, about sixty-five miles total of water distribution out of the system. Those are asbestos cement, P B C, cast iron, ductile iron, and galvanized. So they're, and the material wise, asbestos cement lines, asbestos word is one that nobody likes to hear. It's not particularly a health concern within that water main material. It's not particularly a health concern within that water main material. It's, it is combined within the concrete of, of the pipe. It's a, it's a concrete type of pipe, but, but it's, but it is a material that is at that, at an age that is typically being replaced on or people are working to get those out of their system, discuss if that adds its useful life, but it's on the content asbestos melt is used in water systems. And of course, gal, galvanized tends to be probably the, the most frequently covered around the small diameter galvanized stuff. There is still, still some of that, that around in the, in the system as well. You've got three hundred and twenty-eight, five hundred gallons in the, in the system there. And pressure ranges, thought was interesting to note, that you do have a pressure, a fairly wide pressure range for a, a system in this part of the state, from thirty-five PSI in the upper, upper side of town down to, or up to a hundred and ten PSI as you get down closer to the, to the riverside of town. That's mainly just due to the elevation change across that, that area. But it's just, interesting to note, it impacts the fire flow abilities of various areas in a way that that, that model helps us to under, to understand, make sure that we're designing the system appropriately for that, that range of, of elevation and pressure. So this is where I jump in on more of the, the financial side of things and asset, the results of that a little bit. Just, and I've got, these are, I would say, more of a ten thousand foot view. We're working down to the, to the level of project by project recommendations, but I want to show a little bit about, you know, overall, as you look at the current asset depreciation percentages based on the audit information, the raw account information there, y'all are at about fifty-five percent on the asset depreciation in the general, which basically means assets within the talent appreciated to, to less than fifty percent of their original value overall. The OGC starts to, to comment on that, just not as a, as a, not as a violation of anything, but just a, hey, y'all probably be paying attention to this as you get above that fifty percent level. So it's, just, again, another indicator that there's needs there. The, the other way to look at that type of information is to look at the, the rate of depreciation in comparison to your, your assets overall. And just a, a general, and roll some type of calculator there, that if you look at the overall values of the water and sewer collection and distribution systems, there, reinvesting two percent per year is, is a value of about one point nine million dollars per year of capital outlay towards the system that would be potentially anticipated there. On the, on the wastewater treatment plant, it'd go a little higher than that, a three percent of the, the value. And those are, it's, it's approximations of, of that based on typical originations, you know, order magnitude type numbers here, but that, that would push it like nine hundred thousand for, for the treatment plant on the, as a, investing in that, that asset on a, on a regular basis. The, the, the current water sewer fund budget total is about four and a half million dollars. And that, that, given just the, the general breakdown of some of the major categories within that, your water purchases, I think that the, the biggest piece of it, one point four or five billion. You have relevant collection billing information, the operation, wastewater plant operation, but a little, little bit of debt service. There's sort of capital outlay components of that, unless they are relatively, relatively low overall within it. But you, you have a little bit of, a little bit of debt service from previous outlay. Water, water and sewer rates currently, this is, so I use a five thousand gallon per month residential customer as a standard that the, the state utilizes frequently in, in comparing rates. And we look at digital infrastructure, only the funding agency uses as the, as the just milestone or the, the typical benchmark, I guess, in that. The, more often than not, it seems like most water sewer junior residential customers are actually more like three thousand gallons per day per month. So the five thousand is kind of an older, an older number probably, but, you know, it's just, it's just a benchmark to, to compare. The, it's a, you know, water sewer gals total is about a hundred and ten dollars currently for that little customer. The state average right now on that is eighty, eighty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. That's a, you know, statewide, some systems are lower than that, some systems are higher than that. Also, just will say that don't read too much into that being higher than that number because every situation is unique. It's, everybody has a little bit different setup. Some have more of the economy of scale within systems, some have more challenges environmentally and other aspects of the system that just, the drive, drive that's caught. So it's not intended to, to say that, you know, that your rate is too high by any means. It's just a, you know, something to, to see as to how it does compare across the, across the state. So we are working toward, as part of the study, to look at potentials for mergers and regionalizations that may, that may be beneficial to the, to the Town Spring Lake. So we've met with Fayetteville PWC already, working on certain things up with, with Cumberland County, Hernan County, just to add, to have initial discussions with, with them about their, their systems, their potential opportunities that they have to, to work together with them as the, as a town. And that, so that can come in just a wide range of various potential mechanisms, anything from as simple as operational or administrative type assistance and working together that if, if you've got an extra crew that can follow your rate sheet, if we need, need a hand with something kind of, kind of smaller stuff and coming to, you know, local agreements, all those, those kinds of things, up to the, the potential to even interconnect to, to one of those systems and, I'm sorry, Ternan County, but to, to interconnect with Hernan County or Fayetteville PWC and even try to send all the town's wastewater loads. Those, that's probably all the more extreme and, and unlikely potentials there, but, you know, we're, it's a, we're, we're pretty well open the doors wide in that initially to try to see what's, what makes sense to evaluate in more detail than those, than that feasibility to, to say. So that's, that's what we're, where we're going with that overall. So that part of the effort is still pretty, pretty, we're not going too far down that road, as we wanted to have the, the idea of what the system, what Spring Lake adds first before we started trying to talk to others about what our needs were. The, so the, the intention as we work through this is to, to come to a capital improvements plan, and that will combine in, into financial analysis on the system as well. The, the capital improvements plan initially is going to look at the viability needs, your aging infrastructure within the system, replacing things that are out of, out of the, out of the technologies, looking at operational issues, things that, things that are impacting efficiency and those kinds of issues as well. There's a, you know, some of these types of operational costs can often go up because of the age of the infrastructure. So it's finding, sometimes finding that right balance between investing now or having emergency repairs later is an important, important part of this. For example, with sewer lines that are at that point of failure, if we can get something replaced before you have a midnight call and are trying to get a contractor out there to, to dig out a few fifteen feet in the middle of the road in the middle of the night, it tends to be a lot cheaper to, to do that as a planned, planned project than, than an emergency situation. So the idea of capital for the plan is to prioritize and try to start down that road of trying to, to get to the point of minimizing those types of, of land plan challenges. Also, we look at growth, growth needs within the, the system, making sure that there's adequate capacity there for, for the future needs and regulatory changes there. It's hard to predict the future in regulations sometimes, but there are certain things that we see within the industry right now that need to at least be part of that conversation as you're planning for, for growth within the system. One of those is, is PFAS type stuff is within the, within the, just, excuse me, on the, on the wastewater side, it's definitely something that is, we're seeing more and more regulations coming, coming to us on, on that that can be both issued for you from an industrial standpoint and from a natural capacity standpoint. So within, in the report, we do have a, a rate evaluation included, and that, that will also look at those, the revenue required to, to look at your operations, expenses, determine accuracy of the existing rates to cover your costs and looking at those, those capital costs that are determined through the capital improvements plan. So it all, it all ties in together. And I guess we didn't really explicitly say with the capital improvements plan, it's obviously the, the potential for mergers and regionalization also ties into the capital improvements plan. If a, if a plan in, if we're seeing one of those options helps us with, is a lengthy option, that, that you implementing that goes into the capital improvements plan as part of the long-term financial analysis of the, of the system. And then, of course, you're looking at that cost of service, being what your different customer classes in the, in the system, and your revenue collected within, within those different customer types. A lot of residential, it's something like commercial or industrial, et cetera, it needs to be, to be in the appropriate rate for the amount of impact that they have on the system. And alongside the affordability considerations and how, that certainly will be, be a challenge within this as, as we look at those, the substantialness of capital needs and trying to catch up per se within the system. We have to make sure that we're, that it's something that, to the extent that's plausible remains in the affordability for your, for your town. System development fees, I've got a, I think I've only got one slide in here on this. Have y'all talked about system development fees much, or is this?
Early bit.
A little bit.
We, we currently have the capacity to assess and collect system development fees. What we don't have is a capital improvement plan to match up with those system development fees. So therefore, we would be challenged to collect them if we don't have CIP to drive the collection that way. That's right.
So there was a study that probably, I guess, if I'm hearing that correctly, I would say they, it might not check all the boxes of the statute there to, to meet that.
So there's, there's an exposure for us to try and correct those system development fees. But we are processing, trying to get this study updated. And so we'll work with you guys, Myers or others to do it so that we can collect this. We don't want the bin hires to have to pay for the come hiers. But at the end of the day, the bin hires are going to end up paying for it because we haven't paid enough to maintain the system, to reinvest the system.
Yeah, so the, so actually, working through that process is already included within, that's, that's included within our scope on, on this work is to, to finish that, that system development fee to the point that it is in compliance with that standard. So the, the, I won't go through in much detail here, as it sounds like y'all have already gone down that road, but.
The one statement, growth pays for growth, says it all.
Yep.
Says it all. Growth has to pay for it.
That's the, that's the intention there. And it's, I'd like to say it's a statute that said, this is how you, this is how you go about it. There's a, you know, a few different methodologies that can be used to, to calculate it down to that, but it's been, it's been pretty well written out in black and white at this point. Since it's been out there since two thousand seventeen, there's been, there've been enough legal challenges to it that it's clear what needs it and what doesn't at this, at this point. So it's certainly something I would have to be careful with because that's, it has, it is something that's frequently with duly challenged because of the magnitude that can, can have on that. But I believe exactly that. That's, that's the, the growth, pays for growth is the main intention of it, and all that calculation does is help us to make sure that that's exactly what's happening. So if, if the, that capacity of, of our land is being utilized by, by them? If it's being utilized by new, by new development, then they're the ones paying for, for increasing those fascia, increasing the fascia of lines. Except the, the challenge in, in that is, it does, not the experimental calculations, but it is very much a, it grows in capacities, the type of capital improvements that really go into that. So a replacement project that doesn't increase capacity, although it's an large expense, it comes under the, it comes under the capital improvements plan, it doesn't necessarily completely, would impact that system development fee, that's maintenance of an existing asset.
I don't know why that happened, sorry about that.
Another car that gets you squared.
I think I was about to be in there, so.
Oops.
There we go. So, so I think that was my, one, one last slide there. Just, our next steps, we're going to complete the remaining assessment information there to finalize that, that work, which will inform in finalizing our capital improvements plan. We do have permanent merger regionalizations, discussions to, to continue to, to facilitate there, move, move those, that work forward. And if we're just, you know, all the way through this process, we're going to make sure that Spring Lake is involved. So if the perfect, once we're meeting regular with John and Hannah, et cetera, to work through this and if we need to, need to have other, other players involved in that, glad to, glad to do that as, as well. Certainly, certainly it's a big project overall for the town and, and we'll make sure that everybody has, has a good understanding and opportunity to weigh in and make sure that we're looking at the right, looking at things the right way and not, not missing something that, that any older, involved in the middle of every day might, might tell us. For that, I think I've got, so Gary Jackson is helping on the, the government services side of things, the client services manager that has, has history in, in city manager and various aspects of that. So he's helped me a lot on the, the policies, procedures types of aspects of that. So I've got both our, our contact information up there. Appreciate your time and, what questions?
Thank you so much, David. They are important. Thank you so much. That was a lot. I hope we'll put those handouts later. But one of my questions, you mentioned lead pipes. How did someone know, because I knew we had a lot of older homes, how would someone know if they had lead pipes in their home?
So the, the lead, the lead pipe is actually not part of that study overall. So I'm going to stay to, to speak to that. There are guidelines out there, certainly the age of the, the home, there's certain year, of the years after construction that was, and those kinds of things. Personally, the, the study, the, the study that John was referring to is an EPA mandate regarding the, the pipes outside the house, actually. So it's looking at the spine from the, from the town's service to the, to, I believe, five feet from the edge of the house is the way to put that overall study is looking at. So it, it would look at the, you know, in the beer box and the part outside, the sort of inside the home is where the, a separate, a separate piece there.
Okay, thank you. And what is a broken cleanout? A broken cleanout?
Cleanout, yeah. So, sorry, cleanout is a plumbing term there, but. So our cleanout is a plumbing term there, but it's a spot where usually you see in the yard they have a screw on cap, a white cap that's sitting up in the yard. And that's a spot where like you can enter a long snag or a dab of line to pull out the sewer line. So the, those plastic DC caps tend to get, somebody runs over with a lawnmower or they just tend to get broken. It's very common for that to go.
Thank you. Create the process.
Does anybody remember who did our study in 2019 when we had a water rate study? Does that sound familiar? Was it McConnell?
McConnell. Sorry.
It is online on our website.
Thank you. Okay, so one of the things we went over in our best utility management training was the option when we're going through something like this to create an online GIS for the mapping of the system? Is that included in what you are doing?
Yeah, the system that we have is currently in our GIS online and Deanna has an account through that. So she's, she has access to it in the form of shared account.
Going forward, this is something we'll have, be able to maintain?
Yeah, and it is just a, it's set up as a private, only Deanna and city staff and the Gilson city staff have it right now. It's on a public website.
So does that help in locating, I know that we go around like, I think when there's a leak that we go around, try to locate the leak or there's something that's spray painted on the ground that says locate. Does that sound familiar? Is that something else?
Located stuff are like, try and before you dig, so when you see it sprayed on there, locate.
That's not related to our water sewer?
Yeah, they're trying to make sure they're not going to dig up water lines, sewer lines, electrical lines before they start digging some stuff. So they can do locates before.
But it's not something that this, yeah, this study would help us with it?
You should already be part of the NC one call system. That one, that, I don't, I don't use that one directly. So the shank is, it does have a GIS type of system where basically someone puts in an address, a vendor. And your system is set up within there to, it'll flag that that's frankly gas lines near that address.
But that's not what you guys?
This map would assist the town and staff because they're going to have to mark that. It's okay based on mapping. I'm supposed to have an eight inch line in this area, so they, but it's, yeah, but in accuracy, we've got GPS location on like individual valves, individual hydrants, animals, and the line, the buried water line. We know where it is, what valve is, but we don't really know exactly where that, so it's a huge precaution.
We're currently using the Gil for contracting purposes, right?
And others.
And others, alright. How many municipalities do you provide services for with Gil? Would you estimate North Carolina or, I don't know how big or regional?
I have that number somewhere in our marketing material on the struggle offhand. I would say we do a home call for something like seven or eighty different municipalities around. We have probably a couple hundred clients that are on there. Yeah, we're, but the firm as a whole is about a hundred and seventy people.
That's good, thank you. How many of those municipalities would you estimate purchase all of the water that they're supplying?
Interesting question. I'm hesitant to
That's okay.
Yeah, I really don't have a guess.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, because we're talking about a merger option, which is a discussion we'll have in the future. I'm just curious what those kind of numbers look like, what is normal. Obviously, when you're purchasing water, you're going to have to sell it higher to maintain your infrastructure and also to make some kind of, the water department is a profitable part of what the town does for many purposes. And so that was one of the questions I was just wondering if we can get an answer to later. But, and then I am also curious about how much it would cost for us to provide our own water versus selling it, which I know isn't the norm and I know that. And so I'm just curious about those kind of things, Mr. Rory, when we're looking at these options.
Late September comes up.
Yeah, so anyway, that was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Thank you. I did have another question. You may be me of it. Have you, do you all help facilitate mergers with, facilitate mergers, regionalizations or mergers?
We can, we can assist on the technical aspects and I guess administrative aspects of that. We don't have any kind of legal services in that part of it. So it's certainly something I would anticipate an attorney to be heavily involved in. But we have participated in helping others in setting those types of things up as a consultant through that, through that process. Probably have some other, yeah, some example language depending on the type of situation that you're looking at.
Is there any way you could provide us, say with a couple of examples of communities that regionalized or merged who were purchasing all of their water, so that we can maybe look at some of the, of how that occurred?
Yeah, let me see if I can find an example or two that we could pull from the picture. Yeah, I'll see what I can find there.
Thank you. All right, are there any other questions from the board? Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, we will now move on to agenda item seven C, which is our water and sewer receivables and gallons. Mr. Rory.
Gary, can I make a comment or two before Jimmy starts?
If you've got boxes of tissue, you can pass them yourself.
The mayor and I were in a meeting today and David and I and Deanna met with PWC probably a month ago, Dave, some, maybe six weeks. And there's something I think that should be explored and thought. And the meeting today, we were meeting with a nature conservancy group. And they were talking about the water flows in Drowning Creek, Moore County Kaufman, the Kane area. And how that water flow had declined. So the concern is that they had a water flow rate at one point that's now declining. So you have an environmental impact. And you also have a supply impact on the people who are pulling their water from Drowning Creek. The second conversation was about the abundance of water in the river. So you got one concern where you're seeing a diminishing supply and then you have another concern where you're seeing flood. And so there needs to be some thought into what's causing that. You're having conversations now between Charlotte, North Carolina and Columbia, South Carolina. Columbia being the capital of South Carolina, about water supply. So basically, Charlotte is saying, we're going to restrict the amount of water flowing downstream to Columbia. So if you restrict the amount of water flowing downstream to Columbia, you are effectively restricting their growth. So now you fast forward and you start thinking about base realignment, you start thinking about growth in Spring Lake. And you combine those two thoughts. You are going, your growth is going to be restricted by your sewer capacity and your water supply. It's simply a supply issue when it comes to water. So you can build all the sewer capacity that you want, millions of gallons for millions and millions of dollars. But if you don't have a water supply, so everybody is sticking their straw from a common supply source. So if you want to think about growth of Spring Lake, speaking to the issue of producing the water. You might want to produce it, but there's only two ways to produce it, surface water and groundwater. So you either got to dig wells or you got to pull it out of surface water. So when you pull it off on the surface, in this case, it fear, a lot of people are pulling water from there. So the topic of our conversation with PWC, you start talking about mergers or regionalization. It's not so much about the operational and administration side of it, but the supply side. So PWC only has so much water. They can only dish out so much water. So they can only sell so much to Fayetteville, so much that at some point, you're going to reach this capacity where there's only so much coming to the Cape Fear. You see that happening nationally, at least if you're thinking, you pay attention to it. So the growth of Spring Lake is going to be restrained by its water supply and sewer capacity. You can build sewer capacity, but you can't build water supply. You got to pull it from somewhere. Everybody's sticking their straw in the same aquifer that provides groundwater. Then they're pulling it from the Cape Fear, but you don't pull so much. Then they're treating it, putting it back into the river or wherever it may be. So we got to keep that in mind when you have all these conversations about assets. You know, we just, you consulted Matt here and said, we're behind about twenty million dollars of sewer improvements. Don't lose sight of that because I, you know, I was asked a question during budget time to respond to citizens' concern. And we're really about providing drinking water, water supply, protecting the environment, sewer. Okay, look at all the stuff that we're facing here with just these pictures. Everything that we do is about the quality of life. If we do not invest in our water system and our sewer system, we are simply dying on by. And it doesn't have to get any harder than that. And we're not doing, we're doing a disservice to the people who are depending upon the town of Spring Lake to provide them water, protect the environment, turn the sewer. And we don't fix it, a ditch in time saves nine. We paid one point six million dollars to replace one mile of sewer line. And we could put it off, put it off, put it off, which the cost just keeps going up. So I'm a hush, you let Jimmy go and you let him give you all the good news, right Jimmy?
Yeah.
I told you, he would use no spreadsheet.
Just a couple of comments about Mr. Hunt, one about Mr. Honeybuck's presentation. One of the slides there showed that the rate of depreciation each year was one point seven percent. That's less than two percent a year, which means you are depreciating your water sewer lines and your wastewater treatment plant over more than fifty years, which I think is too long. Some of those lines are probably what, sixty years or more? And they don't, they don't really last that long. After fifty years, they start wearing out. And we'll demonstrate that in a few minutes. But we should, you should be prepared to replace them every fifty years, not more than every fifty years. Second, your comment, question, Ms. Cooper, about regionalization. The city of Raleigh has regionalized water and sewer services. The towns of Knightdale, Garner, Apex, Wake Forest have all sold their water and sewer systems to the town of Raleigh. In Knightdale, we collect water, you can pay your water bill at Knightdale, but all the money goes to the city of Raleigh. Because Knightdale is out of the water and sewer business. Because with the economies of scale, Raleigh can better handle this huge growth that these little towns just can't handle. The city of Goldsboro sells water to Walnut Creek, Fremont, Plainwater districts. There are spout water districts that buy water from Goldsboro and also the town of Eureka. All of them buy their water from Goldsboro. The city of Rocky Mount sells water to several little towns surrounding it, including the town of Quidders. They have not actually, you know, merged. They're just selling the water to these various little towns. And the problem that's happening to these little towns is Goldsboro, especially Goldsboro, because they're way behind. Their water system is horrible. They're raising their rates twenty percent a year. And then they raise it seventeen percent next year. Rocky Mount is not as bad, but they're putting in about an eight to ten percent increase every year. So you could very well see, we had an increase last year, not that bad, from the city of, from Fayetteville Public Works raised their rates last year. They didn't raise them as high as Goldsboro or Rocky Mount, but they did increase, which increases our cost. Okay, so now go ahead and get started. You got the
The PowerPoint?
Yeah, the PowerPoint. First, we'll start out, this is a slide with our cash and investments by fund. Our total cash at the end of September was twelve million four hundred thousand. And you can see the largest portion of that cash was in the water and sewer fund. About forty-four percent of our cash is in water and sewer, a little over five billion dollars. The next largest fund is our general fund. It has over three million in. And then the next two biggest funds, storm water and sanitation, and then the other all of the little grant project funds. But water is about forty-four percent of the total, the general fund's about thirty percent. And the, all of the other funds make up about twenty-five percent of our cash and investments of twelve million. Okay, this shows our general fund revenues for the first quarter of this fiscal year. Our total budget is nine point two million. Of that, so far, we are one fourth of the way through the year, twenty-five percent. We should be about twenty-five percent of our budget, but our revenues are only sixteen percent. The reason for that is in the summer months, July, August, September, you collect very little property taxes. Most of our property taxes do not come in until the fall or November and December. So that will improve significantly in the next quarter. Our expenses in the general fund, again, our budget's nine point two million. So far, we've spent a million eight or twenty percent of our budget. We've only collected sixteen percent. So right now, the general fund for the three months ended in September has a loss of about three hundred and eighty thousand. That will drastically improve over the next quarter. Water and sewer fund, our budget is four point nine million. We should have collected twenty-five percent of our revenue. We've collected about twenty-seven percent. So we're slightly at it. One of the things, Chris, that is we did get a little money from Thimble this year and our interest income is up. But our water and sewer revenues are right at twenty-five percent, which is where they should be. Our water sewer expenses, we've only spent twenty-one percent of our budget. So we're under the twenty-five. One of the reasons for that is our debt service in the water and sewer fund, most of that is due toward the end of the year in May and June of next year. The water fund then has a profit right now of about three hundred thousand. But that will go down when we start paying debt service and some other expenditures later in the year. Now we'll start talking about water and sewer gallons. This chart shows the gallons of water that we purchased versus the gallons we bill. The blue line is how many gallons we purchase. And you see that's close to about three hundred and fifty million gallons a year. The gallons that we bill is only a little over two hundred million a year, a year. So we're only billing about sixty-three percent of the gallons that we're buying from Fayetteville and Harnett County.
Say that again, Jimmy.
We're only, we're only billing about sixty-three percent of the gallons that we are purchasing from Fayetteville Public Works and Harnett County. Ideally, you would, that means that thirty-seven percent is not billed to anybody. Ideally, you would likely unbill gallons to be less than fifteen percent. And you're gonna lose money, lose gallons because of leaks, because of fire protection, flushing the lines. But we're losing over a third of the gallons. It should be less than fifteen percent. Next, this is the gallons.
Did you guys just do twenty-three, twenty-four? Or did we go back a little further?
I just did, I started in twenty, cause that's the last year we did the audit. And I compiled this information for the last four years. The reason I did that is those four years we got set, have audited. And I started with twenty, the last year we've audited. So I can't respond to any years prior to that. But you see, it's fairly consistent, okay? You see the gallons purchased is a little bit higher last year. And the gallons billed is about the same. Now sewer, well, water was bad, sewer is worse. This is the gallons treated at the wastewater treatment plant. And you see, that's about three hundred million gallons a year. We're only billing slightly over a hundred and fifty million. So half the water that's being treated at our wastewater treatment plant is rainwater.
And that's coming from?
All the leaks in, in the pipes and the manholes. So we're only billing slightly over fifty percent. That means we're not billing forty-nine percent. Okay? Which means we need to do a lot of work to repair these sewer lines.
A whole lot, emerging.
Yep. Next, this is the cost of water purchased. The blue line is the cost that we pay Fayetteville Public Works. The orange line is what we pay Harnett Regional. And the gray line is the total. And you see that in twenty twenty-four, it took a fairly significant jump. The reason for that, we used to pay about three eighty-two per thousand gallons. Now we're paying, I don't remember the exact amount, over four dollars because Fayetteville raised their rates last year. And we also had an increase in gallons. That's why the total cost went up to a million two. Now two thousand twenty-five, the reason that that is low, that's only three months, that's not the whole year. But you see there that the, the total cost, I mean, the total cost of water purchased is still, is going up because the rates went up. Now, this is a graph, this shows the cost of water that we pay as a percentage of our revenues. And you see for most years from twenty through twenty-four, it's right around fifty percent. It was a little bit higher at sixty percent in twenty-one. This year, because last couple of months, we've had extremely high water bills. Usually running seventy, eighty thousand a month. Last month's billable from Fayetteville was a hundred and thirty-six thousand. It is up because our gallons were way up last month. We normally buy just under twenty million gallons a month from Fayetteville. The last two months, it's been twenty-three million and twenty-six million. And when we go over twenty million, the rate goes up. So that is why we are at about sixty-five percent for the three months ended in September. Ms. Rosario said that they have found the leak and hopefully, of course, they had another one this morning. They, they fixed one of the major leaks last week. So hopefully, after next month, this will improve a little bit. But she thinks that's the reason we lost, we had such a high deal last month. Okay, but our cost of water is going up. That, that this is just the cost of water itself. That leaves less money to pay for salaries, repairs, chemicals, and all of the other expenses in the water and sewer plant. All right. Now, this is a graph of our current accounts receivable for the month of September. Our total accounts receivable is about a million five. Of that, thirty percent is the current month's bill. These are the bills that were just mailed out right at the end of September, about three hundred ninety thousand. Okay? Our fifty-one thousand is the water bills that are thirty days past you. And twenty thousand is the water bills that are sixty to ninety days past you. The largest portion of our accounts receivable, over a million dollars, or seventy percent, is more than ninety days past you. They're three months behind because they don't live here anymore, they're gone. They're long gone and you ain't never gonna see that money. Okay?
Can you just start this slide over? We had.
You have a million dollars in ninety day past you accounts receivable.
So what do we do with that?
What you do with that is that you can send those receivables to debt service, which we do. Now, debt service is a, it's a service provided by the state of North Carolina Department of Revenue. If you file your income tax return and you are due a refund, if we give them your name, your social security number, and the amount of your past due water bill, the state will withhold that much money from your tax refund and send it to the town of Spring Lake. Okay? Now we do collect a little bit of money. Here's the problem, a lot of people don't get a refund, so does us no good. They did, they only offer this service for individuals, not businesses. So they don't offer it if it's a federal ID number versus a social security number. And most corporations are escorts and partnerships, which don't pay taxes, it passes through to the owners. So you can't get a refund from them. And the third thing is when, when customers sign up to get their water turned on, we have to get their social security number at that time. They do not have to give it to us, we can ask for it. But I'm pretty sure that we don't have everybody's social security number because some of these receivables go back several years or more, or decades.
Don't we have a high number of people who leave the state as well and we can't collect on?
Right, yes, that, that is also true. This only works if they still live in North Carolina. We have their social security number and they get a refund. So we get a little bit of money from debt set off, it triples in. We get a little bit every week. Most of it will come in in February, March, and April when people are filing their returns. What we hope to do is to go through the receivables and see if we have any more that we haven't sent to debt, debt set off, and get those all done before December when people start filing returns in January. And hopefully we'll collect then. But the overwhelming majority of that million dollars, you will never see. Okay? Here is a graph of our accounts receivable and our ninety day past you for the last five years. And you see, the, the orange is our total accounts receivable. Now, the blue is the ninety day past you, over three months old. And you see that the blue is almost as tall as the orange. That means just about all of your accounts receivable are ninety days past you. Now, the reason September is different, that is, the orange is a little bit higher, is that Renee sent the September bills out before the end of the month of September, the three hundred ninety current receivables. For twenty, twenty-one, two, three, and four, the bills for the month of June were actually sent out the month of July and they were not approved by our accountants. So that's why it's almost a hundred percent in the ninety day past you cause it doesn't really include the current month bill for the month of June in those years. But the thing I want to point out is in two thousand twenty, our ninety day past you was under six hundred thousand, it was about five hundred fifty thousand. Our ninety day past you now is a million and sixty-four. It has doubled in the last four years.
Is this water?
Yes, water and sewer. It has doubled in four years from five hundred thousand to a million. Okay? This shows the increase in the ninety day past you over the last four years. In two thousand twenty-one, your bad debts went up seventy-eight thousand. In two thousand twenty-two, they went up a hundred thousand. In two thousand twenty-three, they went up a hundred and ten thousand. And in two thousand twenty-four, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And for two thousand, for September, it is now already increased thirty-two thousand. We'll take that times four quarters, that will project out to about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand this year. Over the last four quarter years, your annual increase or your bad debts averages a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. And here is the reason for that. As Mr. Honeycutt pointed out, our water rates, water and sewer combined, for an average customer, a family, husband, wife, two kids, that use about five thousand gallons a month, our water bill for that family would be a hundred and nine dollars a month. Our deposit for homeowners is only fifty dollars. Our deposit for tenants or renters is only a hundred dollars. So our deposit doesn't even cover one month's bill. When people leave town and don't pay their bill, we have a very high volume of tenants and renters, so they're constantly turning over. And typically, homeowners usually pay better. Tenants leave town, don't give us a forwarding address. Well, you've already billed them for the month of September. So then now they leave town, we have no forwarding address. You go out and read the meter for October, now they owe you two months and they're gone. And their deposit only covers one month. And so my recommendation is that we immediately increase our deposit to two hundred dollars a month. Now this will not help us with current customers, cause they're already grandfathered in at whatever deposit they paid at the time they signed up. So it's not gonna really help the current tenants that leave town and don't pay their bill, okay? But it will fix it for the new tenants coming in going forward. So you're probably still gonna have a hundred thousand dollars of bad debts this year. But if you raise that deposit to two hundred, then that would almost cover two months' bill. Now, so.
I did have a question. What do we do about commercial deposits?
Commercial deposits? You can set a different deposit for commercial than residential. The thing is, for office type commercial businesses, they probably use less water than a residential home. So there would be, just an office, there would really be no need to have a higher deposit than this. Cause in your home, you're cooking, you're showering, watering your yard. Basically, in a commercial office, the only thing you're using water for is the bathroom, so their volume is very low. But things like restaurants, car washes, and other large water users, you could set the commercial deposit at something higher than that. That would be up to you. But I would, but right now, we just have one. And we could put a commercial deposit for large water users at something, you know, say three hundred dollars or whatever. But it is my recommendation to avoid these kind of bad debts in the future that we raise the deposit to two hundred dollars effective the first of the month.
There, I think this is the appropriate time to talk about process of doing that. If that is something the board wishes to consider, I think it should be formalized into some type of a, a rent structure and then go to your next meeting. So that it's advertised, you're very transparent about what you're doing. You can go back through, it's been treated up here, Michael. Treated like a public hearing, you can have the same presentation the next go around. And then you can have approval, cause you can change your rates in the middle of the year anytime, as long as the board addresses it and is very transparent. And so I would suggest not doing it, but follow the process.
Then you can make it effective either December one, after your public hearing in November, or make it effective January one.
Is there an objection from the board with giving staff consent to go ahead and prepare this and present it to the Saturday meeting? I don't know why you're letting them do that.
Yes, I would hope that the, the deposit, deposit study includes commercial because that looks like something that was in money.
Question?
Thank you, Mary. So, so unclear, we are just at this point for this, this public meeting, this public notice putting out, is just to increase the deposits, not only for residential, but also for our commercial tenants. This is not changing the water rates of gallons used per, per month.
Not yet.
Can we respond to that?
It's only the customers going forward, it does not affect current customers. It's for new water customers paying a higher deposit.
Jimmy.
Yes, sir.
Consulted that.
Okay, I know the question you want to ask.
Yes, you know the question I'm gonna ask, this is by design. I'm sorry, I was trying to be transparent as well. So we flipped the presentation to have David first to talk about the condition assessment. And then you have the information of the condition and then what it's gonna take to reverse that. And so at the end of the day, it's, it's really a simple calculation. It's gonna take money. And so now you go, how much money? And how much do you generate and how do you do that? So I asked Jimmy to give you a calculation of what the rate would need to be with two assumptions. We already heard that we're behind roughly twenty miles of sewer pipe needs to be replaced. Just check that. Now, the accuracy of that and where we're at in terms of on the market, it doesn't matter. Just keep that as an assumption known. And then say, okay, so now we gotta take and depreciate this, or we gotta replace so much pipe per year. We're working a five hundred thousand dollar grant, which David referred to as ARF, Arc of Money, to replace Mack Tree and Toor. Is that a complete replacement of everything in that area, or is it just coming up short?
I don't have those links handy, it's, I won't say we're, we're aiming, it's actually a section of Mack and one other street. So there's two, two streets we're trying to do this, it's not Mack all the way top to bottom. It's about eighty, a hundred feet, a hundred percent.
It's limited by the funding. So I asked Jimmy to calculate, so we know that if it's one point six million for one mile, and you got twenty miles, you're at twenty to thirty million dollars, just rough math, right?
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight million.
They count, right? Who's counting? How many penis? Sorry, I'm having a fun.
A whole lot of money.
So I said, Jimmy, I want you to tell me what the rate needs to be to do two things. Number one, to put five hundred thousand dollars a year into fund balance or cash reserves. He's already talked to you about your cash position, your investments, things of that nature. You also have to talk about cash flow. We don't have revenues coming in right now, yet we're making expenses on anticipated revenues. All right, so we're basically outrunning our headlights right now. But we know that that turns around in the next quarter. So one, five hundred thousand dollars into fund balance, so that you can cash flow operations without having the revenue coming in. And then second, five hundred thousand dollars of capital improvement. David refers to as a capital improvement plan. Now recognize that one mile of sewer pipe is one point six. So you gotta collect five hundred thousand dollars a year to replace one mile of sewer pipe. That's, that's that whole rough math. So what does the rate need to be for the average consumer to generate for our entire system?
A million dollars.
A million dollars. We'll call it extra, but that's still short. Okay, five hundred thousand into fund balance, five hundred dollars into capital improvement.
This is your total budget in the water fund, four point nine million, okay, this year. Of that four point nine million, it includes about three hundred. Of that four point nine million, it includes about three hundred thousand for capital improvements this year. So take that out. So your other expenses not counting capital are four point six million. All right, in order to have a million dollar left over, five hundred for fund balance, five hundred for capital improvements, your revenues would have to be five point six million. A million more than, than four point six, okay? Our revenues are running right at what they should be, of just a little over twenty-five percent. Or there, there should come out about five billion dollars for the year. In order to get it to five point six million, we would need probably somewhere between an eleven and a fourteen percent increase in the rates, okay? Now, our rate for an average customer is a hundred and nine dollars, let's just say a hundred and ten. Ten percent would be eleven dollars, eleven percent would be about twelve dollars, okay? So you would need about, about a twelve dollar increase in your average water bill. That would take it from a hundred and nine to a hundred and twenty-one.
For an assumption of a hundred and forty-four dollars a year, to fund roughly less than half of the capital improvements that we need.
Yeah.
On an annual basis.
Right.
Right, so um.
So you're, you're looking at somewhere between ten and fourteen percent, somewhere between eleven and fourteen dollars a month increase.
So if we don't do that, and we kick the proverbial can down the road, what continues to happen to our system as a whole?
It deteriorates.
So we don't have an asset, an underground asset. We end up with a um expanding underground liability.
And we're already losing half, half the water in sewer and a third, over a third of the water in, in water that we're not billing.
We did a blanket PO for water repairs this year so far. We're twenty-five percent through the budget. That PO amount was for X amount of dollars, do you recall?
Uh repairs, no, I'm not, not off topic.
Are we over?
Huh? Oh, oh, no, okay. Uh we had put in about a hundred thousand dollars, we've already spent it, all of it. Because each time an oil comes out and patches leak, it's about twelve to fourteen thousand dollars, and they've already been out here five or six times.
Fixing where that thirty-seven percent of the water is going.
Yeah. So uh yeah, we, we're already, we've already spent that line item and some more. And we're just three months into the year.
This is our daily conversation.
So I know hearing that the word rate increase is scary, but it's we pay now uh to fix it, or we continue to pay more and the cost increase exponentially, as John said, if we continue to kick the can?
You're, you're not the only town in this situation. I mean, like I just said, uh Goldsboro raised our rates twenty percent one year and seventeen the next year. Rocky Mountain raised theirs eight percent, two years in a row, okay? Uh Raleigh rate increases are slightly less from where I remember, but that's been a while back. So ten years ago, uh when I worked at Knightdale, the reason being Raleigh being as large as it is, has a much broader customer base, they can spread their fixed costs out over more customers, therefore they can sell their water a little bit cheaper. Then a small town, you have a small number of customers, so the cost per customer is greater.
So the reason why I intercepted your, your question, the reason why I like them is for that reason. I think that you could consider this as a pull, not as just a, um you should look at the rate structure and what it is, power it's applied, what's going on. Um and you can face it now, you can face it tomorrow, you can face it the day after that. Um ultimately, I believe it is staff's position and responsibility to provide the board information, and you decide. Uh as a manager, my recommendation would be to approach both the deposit and the rates now. Not wait till budget timing, March, April, May, and June. Um that would be my recommendation for us. Do you give us the nod, bring the connection back to you? Ultimately, you approve.
Looking at your rate schedule, uh there's only one rate structure. Most towns have a different rate structure for inside and outside customers, where outside customers are paying a higher rate than inside customers.
We do, Jimmy. We do. Yeah, they think they're all outside.
That's hard, but yeah.
And so this leads to the second part of that, was that with this uh unaccounted for water and the sewer leaks in there, how does that factor in once we get these leaks fixed? And, and what does that do to our, our accounts receivable and?
Well, it does, it does nothing to your account receivable, because that, that million dollars is already gone. What it does, it would, if you fix the leaks, it would lower the amount of gallons that you buy from Harlan County and from Fayetteville Public Works, because you wouldn't be losing as much of that water just running out on the ground. So it would lower your cost of water. Um it would also probably lower your chemicals and stuff at the sewer plant, because you wouldn't, you wouldn't be treating so much rainwater. Um that's a problem that many towns are facing, uh inflow and infiltration. Uh what rainwater leaking into the lines is a statewide, nationwide problem, because just like your lines, many towns have water and sewer lines that are forty, fifty, sixty years old. And some, some of the lines downtown under the concrete could be a hundred years old, if they were put in, you know, in the nineteen thirties or something. So um it is a nationwide problem, and it's not gonna get any cheaper.
So we're fixing this saves us money, which allows us to provide higher quality services for you. Uh we can better take care of our employees, so again, it's not just, uh, because I know that's something that we, we hear quite often when we talk about rate increases is, we're just trying to take your money, always remember, we pay these same rates. We live here too. Uh but this is about making sure that we are um being responsible stewards over not just the finances, but our infrastructure as well, as well, because again, this is all about your quality of life.
One other thing, uh when I talk about the council receivable here, uh we're in twenty twenty, there were about five hundred and fifty thousand. Uh in your twenty twenty audit report, your allowance for bad debts was about five hundred and sixty thousand, which is pretty much equal to your ninety days past due. And that's what I've always used as my allowance for bad debts. You see now it's a million dollars, that allowance has not been updated in the last four years. Well, it, well, it's updated last week, because I did it, but anyway. So the point is, that's a five hundred thousand dollar decrease in your fund balance, when you adjust that allowance for bad debts to what it actually is. So your fund balance in the water fund was overstated by five hundred thousand.
Mr. President? Thank you. Um I would, um as we continue to look at this, I would like to know if the outside users are paying equitable amount, um if two, if twice the rate is really equitable to what our taxpaying citizens are paying. So if we could get some type of maybe, an idea of how many of those people that includes, and what they're paying versus what our citizens in the, uh within the city then that are paying.
Yeah.
Can we do it on the number of customers?
Yeah.
And just give you an idea. The, the average consumer is average consumer, whether they live inside the city or not. Uh the, the whole idea about uh living outside the city, is it costs us to pump it out there, and in a lot of cases bring it back? Um it, it's electrical charges, it's pump charges, it's pipe charges. So that's why you always hear me refer to density increase inside our borders, instead of expanding our borders, because we make our community poorer when we expand our borders and have to ex- expand all of these resources outside of the city, or to grow that, that circuit directs you, that makes you have density to support.
I just wanna make sure that they are paying their fair for the service they're getting, so that we're not putting that on the backs of our city taxpaying citizens.
Mr. Board?
Yeah, thi- this will be a brief question. Uh when is the old debt just removed from the accounts receivable? Like how old, what's the oldest debt in the accounts receivable?
Uh that's a good question, and I do not know the answer. Uh what this is, is the cumulative accounts receivable as far back as your computer system goes.
That could be, that could be like?
It could be decades, yes, sir. It could be.
And we know a lot of it is covered.
Now, the reason that it is not writ, I mean, you can write it off and just take it out of the system. The reason we don't do that is people leave Spring Lake, they move to Fayetteville, they move to Raleigh, they move out of state.
They come back.
They come back. If we still have that receivable on the books, then before they can reconnect and turn their water on again, they have to pay off their old account that they left uh when they moved out years ago.
And that was my next question, why have like a ten year old debt, but you didn't?
Yeah, that, that's it. But the thing should be, is your allowance should equal the ninety day past due. And we made that adjustment last week.
We also have, uh this is worth noting, since we're talking about, forgive me. I know we're trying to keep it to a two hour, uh you know, or maximum. But uh one of the things that we need to, we also need to think about is the number of of late bills and cutoffs that we deal with on a monthly basis. Um one of the things that Commissioner Colosseus talked about, this special utility practice, one of the things there is that there are locations that if you are a frequent person who gets cut, cut, cut off, you have to go on a prepaid cash basis. Um and I think that's worth thinking about, because it is the only tool in the toolbox that you have.
Yeah.
Um and you need to put this, if you, if you just pay late, pay late, pay, pay late, put cut off, put cut off, then once you reach a couple of times of that for a year, instead of trying to get some week adjustment, then you go to a cash placement, and then you pay this deposit in advance, instead of us continuing to front the bill. Now, we're purchasing this water. We, that, that cost is gone by the time we bill you for it, it's long enough. So why should you have this continuous uh process? And so that's another thing I think we should put in front of it.
And it's the same customers every month. They're habitually late. And we also probably get a bad check just about every day.
So are we, are we okay with giving staff consent to um that and his data, was it, was for next week? Yes.
Right.
Or, excuse me, next meeting, next, or?
The recommendation of what to do to the board.
Thank you.
We'll do it advertising, get everything um to the board, so everybody knows.
Thank you so much, Jimmy. All right, we will now move on to our new business, and this is our personnel benefits, uh Mr. Board.
All right, so let me just keep on with the old theme, this is how we're trying to drive the conversation. Um our water and sewer system should be an asset, not a liability. Our employees should be assets, not liabilities. So I have an interest in recruiting talent that are in search of a career. If there are folks who want a job, they can go somewhere else and get a job. I want people that have a public service mentality, that are focused on growing and developing and staying with this talent, not for their entire careers, but at least for a time period in which um they contribute to our customers, to our shareholders. They add value as opposed to just consuming. And so that's of critical importance. When we were doing the budget, um I talked a lot, and if you look online, you look at our budget message, I talked quite a bit and actually wrote quite a bit about being the employer of choice, not the employer of last resort. This board, um over the course of the last year, has responded in a positive manner in regards to making sure that we're trying to recruit talent, and that we are a, in a competitive market to pull those folks in. So if you take our water operations um division, it's worth noting that none, zero, none of our folks met the job description requirements to be licensed and certified to work on our water sewer system. None, okay? So what do you do to overcome that, and how do you move in that direction? Um this board has responded by providing a um twenty percent increase to our police department. That comes at a cost. Um we have, this year, we have redone this budget, we've redone our classification system to where we have no employees, all right? No employees that make less than fifteen dollars an hour, except for firefighters. That's because how you calculate the hourly rate versus the hours that are worked in a given twenty-eight day cycle. But all of our other general class employees, um he was just out here. Um and so I say no employees make less than fifteen, it's because of how we did the budget. He is currently at fourteen eighty, and when we do what we're talking about tonight, he will be the last one that across that fifteen dollar mark, um because of the coal that's built into the budget. So I wanna have that conversation, I wanna, you know, um set the stage to what we're talking about is being the employer of choice, and being in a competitive market, or trying to recruit talent that wants to add value to our customers, to our citizens, not just come here and get a job and go spend it somewhere else. I'll, you know, I'll be very clear about that, I'm not hiding that at all. Okay, that's a very important thing. Um let me just talk, I also, even though Jimmy, the, the uh spreadsheet, I do have one. Yeah, and you know, he snuck one in there. I saw that. I saw that.
You saw it last week.
I know. What I'm doing here is showing you uh same orange blue bars, right? And then what we refer to as total compensation. So we are a creature of the state, and I'm using police officer as an example, because this board responded to the twenty percent increase for our um uniformed officers. And I'm comparing them to our wastewater treatment plant superintendent. Um now this is a management position, wastewater treatment plant superintendent, and a baseline starting police officer, just comes out of a recruit academy. So a police officer that just comes out of the academy starts with an annual salary of forty-eight thousand, one forty-eight. I think that's right, it might be wrong, I'm getting that from HR, okay? Um but they're, they're the ones that put this together for me. That was a struggle six months ago. Now I've got them doing it for me, right? Um notice that underlying the, the starting salary for our wastewater treatment plant superintendent is forty-seven thousand dollars. So someone who treats the water, to put it back into the river, so four thousand five hundred plus people can consume it after it's cleaned. You get where I'm going, right? So we have a gr- a great classification system, we're balancing, how do we recruit? If I had to replace our wastewater treatment plant superintendent, there's absolutely no way I could be competitive and recruit somebody for seven thousand dollars. It ain't gonna work, okay? So I'm gonna have to look at the range to recruit these people in. Or I need to take advantage of economies of scales, this is where you start talking about merger, regionalizations. So you ask about McGeal, we also use Myers Engineering. So Myers Engineering is currently serving as our um ORC, and they have provided a value-added service in support to uh Rosario and the, the water team. Compliance issues, the lead pipe inspections, all of that stuff is underway. Um but then you go from left to right, and you'll see that we pay a portion that's flat for medical, flat for dental, flat for di- uh vision, so forth and so on. The holidays are a little different, because everybody gets thirteen holidays a year, roughly at eight hours, which is a hundred and four hours of paid holiday time, whether they're here working or not. Um if you're a police officer, you can, if you just get paid that as additional pay, uh I'm off, right? I just stay home. But they have to work, so they just get additional pay. Longevity, uh the North Carolina local government retirement system, uh they'll refer to that as LEAGERS. You'll know that that's different, it's because it is a percentage of salary. So the higher your salary, whether you're an hourly employee, and we use the term salary, or actually an exempt employee that is really on a salary, um the higher your salary, the percentage is the same, but the amount that you send to the state in support. So what this is showing is that for the police officer, we send seven thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars to the state retirement system on behalf of police officer, okay? Okay? We s- we spend, or send, six thousand five hundred fifty to the retirement system for this other class employee for the wastewater treatment plant superintendent. It's a percentage of, and it's basically like fifteen percent now, it's went down, which is critical. The other part is the 401K. Uh, we have a state mandate that we take and send five percent of the police officer's salary to the 401K. Doesn't matter if they're a police officer or a sergeant or a captain or lieutenant or a chief or assistant chief. It's five percent of their salary, so the higher the salary, the more percentage included to the, uh, 401K pocket. Uh, FICA is relative to the same, seven point six five percent of whatever. And so it also moves with the salary. Um, so our total compensation for a police officer, without thinking of the uniforms and the take-home cars and this, that and the other thing. So for every police officer, boot, recruit, police officer, we're all in seventy-three thousand dollars a year. So what starts as a forty-eight thousand dollar salary becomes seventy-three thousand dollars when you look at all this stuff on behalf of a police officer. The wastewater treatment plant superintendent is about seventy thousand. You'll note the difference there is in 401K contributions and mostly in the, uh, retirement system contribution because it's a little bit lower for a general class employee than it is for a, um, let's say, police officer. Roll it up for me, there's only three of them, y'all. So let's talk about that, here's my spreadsheet slide. What am I showing here? Um, take that same, if you look all the way to the left, current police officer, forty-eight thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars. If we did a one percent raise to that police officer, it equates to four hundred and eighty-one dollars a year of one percent raise. One percent on our total payroll cost, CDY, is roughly forty thousand dollars. All right, so one cent on the tax, forty thousand, you get it. You see how we track of all these one percents, um, and how, because they're easy math. So if you do a, a one percent raise, forty-eight, uh, four hundred eighty-one thousand dollars, now the police officer's starting salary becomes forty-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-nine. We're going from left and right. So you see a one percent is four eighty-one, two percent is double that, and a three percent is three times that. But then you come down to the bottom line of the blue columns, a one percent raise that the police officer goes to four eighty-one actually costs the town six hundred and fourteen dollars. It's not just a simple four eighty-one because you've got all these other impacts with FICA, matching, retirement, 401Ks, things of that nature. Uh, a three percent raise, the cost to the town. Now I use cost very loosely, I understand the asset and the liability, I'm not being, uh, any kind of mean when I say that. But, so a three percent across the board for a police officer would take the starting salary up by one thousand, four hundred forty-four dollars, but it would cost the city two thousand, two hundred and nine. So you're looking at base salary, take-home net, gross, and then about across the line, and you're looking at this for ninety employees. So how do you become the employer of choice if you are providing non-competitive, non-market rates salaries for your police officer, for your wastewater treatment plant supervisor, superintendent, uh, for the guy who, the grounds guy, the streets guys, um, the revenue collections, the meter readers, all of these have to be calculated in in order to try to recruit the talent. So the number one position, um, once again, I am saying this loosely, the most important position in the water department is the meter reader. They are the cash register. You got it. All right, they read the meters, so it generates, so it's very important, right? That they're doing a quality job. We have some impacts, some, some capital impacts that we're dealing with on a meter. Um, but you take this all the way across and you'll see that the percentage is fifteen oh four for a police officer, five percent 401K, seven point six five, uh, for a FICA. But at the bottom, it talks about their hourly rate of pay. So currently, the hourly rate of pay for a police officer is twenty-one sixty-six. So you have to ask the question, how many people would want to be a cop twenty-one dollars an hour? Um, it's an interesting question, right? Um, how many would want to be a, uh, dig in a ditch in a water leak at two o'clock in the morning on Rad Boulevard for fifteen dollars an hour? It's a valid question. How do you recruit the talent that's gonna provide the service to keep the system working? Um, how do you make sure they're assets? So two thousand, but that's based on two thousand, two hundred twenty-three, um, hours per year. The reason why I said nobody makes less than fifteen dollars except for the firefighter, um, how many hours do you guys, twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine seventy.
Twenty-nine seventy. So you take an annual salary about about twenty-nine seventy, double it with an hour of the rate, that's fourteen dollars or something, what is it?
Forty-five, forty dollars.
All right, and so, um, that's a whole different conversation on FLSA. But what I'm trying to show here is that there's an impact for every one percent. And we have to calculate, um, how we measure that impact or how we roll out these dollars because we have to be the steward of the dollars, we have to be thoughtful of what that does. So, um, I've got two things, roll the next one. But, um, I'm gonna hush for just a second, but let Carly speak to this app.
Yes.
Carly's shy. Tell her, Carly, you got this.
So our app is up and it's live, so you can download it both on iPhone and Androids or Google Play or i- iStore or iPlay, whatever it is. But, um, here, as you see, if you could do any, you can start a request. It goes from, you know, inspections, animal control, sanitation, uh, you know, all, everything that you can possibly think of, uh, you know, there's probably gonna be some kinks. We might could add stuff, we can delete stuff if we don't need it. But, you know, there's a notifications page. All these, uh, outlets right here under the start request, basically, it takes you, takes the person to the website. So it, it gives you all information that you need, you know, our directory, any job opportunities we have available. But, uh, the main portion of it is gonna be the start request, which, um, that are, that are accessible as the town employees, it's basically our department heads, A D L team, and also Mr. Rory. So he will be notified of everything. So it's pretty much self-explanatory, but, you know, anybody wants to use it, please do. And since now that we broadcast it, I will post something on our web- oh, and we can also post this on our website in case somebody doesn't want to do it through a phone. We can do it through, they can do it through the website. So I will post this on the website as well as broadcast it on our Facebook page. So, so just with this app, this is equipping our citizens to help us keep eyes on our town. Uh, so I highly encourage you to not only download the app, but tell your friends, families, neighbors, uh, business associates, help us, uh, address the issues. And this is going to give you direct contact, not a direct response or reply, but you'll definitely get to us and it'll be on our radar where we can track this data. Um, you can upload pictures directly, so if there's, um, a, a power line or a pole that's maybe broken, we had some type of conversation about this before. Snap a picture of it, you'll go right in that starter quest, you'll pick which department or you have a leak. Uh, you see a leak in the street, you'll pick the, the water department or, or, uh, store water. And upload a picture, put in the information, it'll be routed to the department and we'll be responding to it in a timely manner. Responded to, not missed. So just remember that, this is you getting, sending the notification to the town and not placing your order at the McDonald's window and expecting to get it right away. Uh, so just keep that in mind, but this is, this is a huge thing for our town. We have water outages that we can send notifications for. Uh, but again, it's more important for you to send your information to us uh, so that we can continue to better this community. And, uh, Carly did a phenomenal job on this app, uh, thank you.
She did very helpful. So the first one to use it-
Hang on, Mr. Ray.
Okay?
You can also, it is, uh, GIS or GPS, so you can put exact location and it will be, you know, you know, if you wait till you get home to do it, you can move the little cursor around and pinpoint exactly where you saw it. And like Mayor said, you can, uh, do pictures. And then, uh, the notifications one, you know, like I said, if we have a water outage or there's a street closer, uh, closure, anybody that is notified on this app or has their notifications enabled, they'll get this via a text or through a notification through the app. So I worked really hard on this, so just bear with me if you see some kinks in there, okay?
The first, the first one to use this, okay, is, uh, the fire chief sending a notification to the police chief. If you ride up and down Main Street, because it automatically routes it, Mayor's gotta do it. And so, um, there's a van sitting on the road. I rode by that day and said, well, why is that van just sitting there? So we frequently get things like, uh, van of vehicles, why are they parked in public parking, why they not doing this? So the fire chief decided to send the police chief a picture of this van. He just clips it, snaps a picture, puts a GPS location, it goes to the police chief. Now the chief can route it the way he needs to. Um, but I want you to recognize that it is on a phone. So if you expect people to perform, right? If you want the water guy to dig a hole, you gotta get on the shovel.
Right.
All right? If you want our police officers to be responsive in terms of see something, say something.
Do something.
You want the public to see something, say something, you gotta give them the tools to do that.
Yep.
And so that's what this is about, um, and so back up one more, back up one for me, our police. Now you notice that a one percent, uh, comes at a cost of six hundred and fourteen dollars. Um, I budgeted a three percent for coal, um, for all employees except the police department because this board had responsibility to twenty percent, so I wasn't gonna do a three percent on top of that. But what I would like to do is to offer all of our employees a fifty dollar a month stipend in lieu of a one percent pay raise. It's the same thing, but the difference is, a fifty dollars a month, the math is six hundred dollars a year. So now that's a flat six hundred dollars, or fifty dollar a month stipend, but it's not impacted by 401Ks, FICA's and all that other stuff that you gotta deal with. And so it equips our officers and funds a little bit of an increase to the stipend component. And we don't have to provide city cell phones, they can use their own cell phones. And so now it can all be routed, they can see something, say something, take a picture on patrol. Uh, the same with the fire chief, when he's riding down the road, he can take a picture on patrol. Um, I can tell you that the, the most prolific users are usually council board members and the manager. Um, I've taken thousands of pictures because I know it's routing to the person. I don't have to remember it, come back, send an email, do all this stuff, it's simple, point, click, snap, boom, it's gone, it's done. Um, so I'm wanting to do a stipend and eliminate, uh, city cell phones, but let everybody use their personal cell phones. And we'll give a stipend for that equivalent to one percent raise. We'll still do a two percent coal for everybody. The second component that I want to do is, if you notice, back up one more. You'll notice that the general class employee, right? The way, in this case, the wastewater treatment plant superintendent gets zero 401K dollars. The police officer gets a mandated five percent by state law. So I want to use some of this coal money to provide a one percent matching amendment for any employee who contributes to 401K. So these are pre-tax dollars. So if they take one percent of their money, um, in this case, a, a brand-new police officer, four hundred and eighty-one dollars, right? They put it into a 401K. There are, the police officers already get a five percent. But the general class, if they did that same thing in wastewater, then we would match that four hundred and eighty dollars with another four hundred and eighty dollars to build into their 401K. And so that is, uh, you know, you come, you're investing and all the stuff that goes with it has to be considered. But it is a, we cannot compete without having these tools. I was trying to hire a building inspector and, uh, just to be blunt, I offered him eighty-two thousand dollars a year for building inspector. Now, the wastewater treatment plant supervisor is forty-seven thousand dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
Offered this building inspector eighty-two thousand dollars a year, and he says, I can't do it. He said, uh, I'm making already, uh, over ninety thousand where I'm working and I'm giving a five percent automatic contribution of that into a 401K. A lot of cities are doing 401K contributions. Um, now, we had some freeze-up with that in terms of ODC, U P S, financial control, fund balance. Um, all of the things that I'm suggesting is available and can be funded in the budget. Second to that, we're seeing a reduction in our, uh, where we pay now fifteen percent towards the retirement system for a, uh, police officer and thirteen percent for a general class employee. We were paying twenty-one and twenty-two percent, right, Jimmy?
Twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty, twenty-one, so that just went down. So there's money in the budget to do this. And so this isn't new money, it's already there, it's already budgeted, but it will be ongoing expense. It's not, it'll be one time. So what you're doing is, uh, basically using those dollars that are in the budget, but just redirecting in a different way to support employees. So that's what I'm trying to accomplish. Um, and one, so the 401K, the cell phone stipend, I think all of those things are important. And so, um, I will write that into the personnel policy, um, that will come back to you on your next meeting for adoption. Um, we also talked about additional holidays and things of that nature. Um, I know the reasons for that and what you're trying to do, you're not trying to just give away all your leave type of trust or not, um, but it's how you take and roll these things out and fund the various benefits in terms of total compensation versus just a salary. And so we need to compete in every one of those areas. And if, if not, we end up the employer of last resort. We get what others won't hire because they're in a competitive market and they get the talent coming to them and we don't. Um, that's my takeaway and that's how I wanted to close with it. Um, so you've heard water, sewer, you know where to buy, but none of that happens. None of it happens without our employees. And so, uh, we've gotta be man, money, machines, materials, the four of us. Man, money, machines and materials. You take one way, one of those away, the other three suffer or just simply can't function. And we've got to put all those pieces together on a daily basis. That's my recommendation. I will bring to you the personnel policy with those chains. Um, and we'll also be talking about, um, the rate study and stuff.
Rory?
Mr. Orton?
Yes. One con- on the cell phone stipend, um, with, as Rory said, with, with a one percent raise, the town has to pay, um, retirement and FICA tax and 401K for police officers. So it costs us more to do that kind of raise than the cell phone stipend. It's also beneficial to the employee because we have to pay tax on it in retirement. The employee also has to pay six percent retirement and, uh, seven point six five FICA tax plus federal and state income tax. With the cell phone increase, he gets to keep the whole six hundred dollars because it's an expense reimbursement that's non-taxable. So he actually gets, by giving him the same amount in a cell phone stipend versus a raise, you actually increase his take-home pay.
Thank you for that, Larry. Are there any questions for Mr. Rory? I think so. All right, we will now move on to the last portion of our agenda. Um, I just have a few updates for you. Excuse me, I did want to, uh, address the hillside property. Um, uh, as much as we share those sentiments of wanting to see, um, the cemetery rehabilitated um, and cared for, it is out of the town's jurisdiction. Uh, that's one of our donor holes, that is actually Campbong County property. Um, and the town has no legal jurisdiction to do anything in service of that particular property. However, um, I have been speaking to our state representatives um, to see if we could possibly, uh, receive fu- funding to funnel through the town to, um, help support this organization, but, um, unfortunately, as the town, our hands are tied. Um, as individuals, um, because again, this was something that I, I wanted to take on myself as well. Um, we can do it, we can assist as individuals, so I'm publicly letting you know that you have my full support um, as KIAD thing, uh, but as the town of Spring Lake, that is outside of our jurisdiction and we are, um, we can't, you know, go into an area that's not ours. So, thank you, um, for taking this project on. Again, we have veterans there, it is, uh, historical- We have veterans there, it is a historical, historically black cemetery. Um, there's a lot of history surrounding that, and so we definitely want to see it preserved so that we can honor the life and legacies of those who are, uh, who follow resting places at Hillside. And, so. Um, another thing, no First Friday for November, it's getting kinda cold outside, we do not have, uh, the means to provide any sort of heat. And I was at a rugby game this weekend in the daytime at fifty-five degrees and I was, uh, I thought I had hypothermia, so I thought it was about time for us to, to shut down the season for First Friday, um, if we get plans for next year. So if you wanna get involved, we will begin, uh, First Friday again next summer. Uh, so you can definitely be a part now, um, and start planning for that. Early voting is still happening right now, right across the street. I am super proud of the numbers that Spring Lake is producing. Um, as you all know, we have been, um, on the chopping block for losing our early voting site for the past three years consecutively. Um, and we have fought, um, and it prevailed with maintaining our early voting site out here in Spring Lake because every voter, um, deserves equal access to, um, to be able to vote. It doesn't matter who you're voting for, you should have, I don't care if there was one voter in Spring Lake, um, they should have the right to, um, access to the ballot box. So right across the street, um, encourage your employees or employers, and, uh, if you don't live in Spring Lake right now during early voting, you can register, um, and vote at any polling location, and I highly encourage you to choose Spring Lake as your destination, our waiting is low, uh, the lines are short, and the workers over there are phenomenal. So, uh, Spring Lake is definitely the place you wanna vote. So a bit of doing the things that I love. Today is National First Responders Day, um, so I would like to give our first responders a round of applause. We have our police chief, our fire chief, and our police lieutenant here. Um, lieutenant said, that's our guy over there. Uh, but I would like to take a, uh, small point of privilege to recognize, um, our fire chief. Jason, if you could, could you, uh, come to the podium? I know that look.
What I do.
We've been plotting on you for quite some time now, we just couldn't, uh, work it out. And you were scheduled to get you to the meeting, and so you were a big creative this time, Jason. And I know, you, this is probably one of the most humble men I've met. Um, he attributes his success to his team, but his team attributes his, uh, their success to him. Um, and that's what good leaders do. Jason was our fire chief, uh, during some of the, what is, during a very, very tumultuous time here in Spring Lake when we were in the process of, uh, hiring a town manager. We thought the position was secured, um, and we had a two-week interim to fill the space of town manager. Well, things happened, uh, we ran into, we, I ran our headlights. We had some situations arise, and, um, what we thought was going to happen, uh, and with Jason being in the position as interim town manager for only two weeks, turned into a two-year stint. And I, I know the board will agree with me when I say Jason, um, was a strong glue that held this town together in a time where we were very fragile. His leadership and respect from not just the board, but throughout the entire staff, not just the fire department, not just public, uh, our, our, um, police and fire department, through the entire organization. The respect, the, the honor, the leadership, um, it, it was resounding that Jason was, you know, doing a phenomenal job. He was even recognized, um, at the county level, and this was nothing that we could submit for. This was a community of public choice award, um, out of our entire county. Jason was, um, given the valor award, this is one of the highest recognitions that the, um, Daniel Chambers presents. And he was selected out of a number of candidates, um, because he is that special. He probably said, "Special Ed." He's gonna beat me up, because Jason doesn't like recognition, but he is deserving. Um, and we want to give you your flowers, uh, while you're here, because you are more than deserving of it. Uh, you stepped in and filled a position, uh, that none of us could have anticipated. Uh, and you did it with honor and dignity and respect, um, and you made Spring Lake look really well. When we were getting, uh, once getting, you know, threats from the state treasurer's office to him coming down and taking pictures and congratulating our staff under the leadership of Jason, um, is a big thing. So I personally thank you, uh, for the countless times we've sat talking and, you know, navigating the issues of this town. Bringing me food, because we worked, we worked for quite some time, and just being an, an overall great person. Um, thank you from the bottom of my heart for standing with us, because it was hard. It was very hard, and, um, you did it, Jason. Thank you so much. And I know, um, if the board wants to say a few words, I wanna give them the time to, uh, and they're sure as well, so is there anything from the board? Go ahead, just go ahead.
Go ahead, Marvin.
Jason, got to know you over the time, I appreciate all that you've done. You have made Spring Lake much better. The efforts, the big time, the dedication that you have put in has shown. You know, you give us the credit, but it wasn't us, it was you. It, it was the efforts, it was the time that you dedicated, uh, where the skeletons were buried, that you uncovered, that you did this. You made this town a, a destination instead of just a stopover. So, you know, when I say, see something, say something, do something, you were the do something. You were the one that, that, that empowered the workers. You were the one that, that gave Steve Wang and the people the tools, the equipment that they needed to, to make Spring better. So everything that, that you see that, that's taken place around here, a lot of that is due to your leadership and, and not just the fire department, but the town of Spring Lake. So I wanna say thank you.
Yeah. So I said it once before, and I'll say it again, you were very competent and capable. You were very efficient as our town manager, and, uh, you were creative. And you had a lot of personal sacrifice in that role that you served. And you took it to challenge. And, um, and it wasn't, uh, you were the first person we thought of when we said, you know, we got two weeks here. Jason's got a lot on his mind, let's, let's throw him in there, let's put him to work. And, uh, and the fire department also ran very efficiently during that time. You had, you have raised up good leaders in the fire department. And so, uh, so we appreciate your sacrifice that you went through personally. And, um, and we hope that you were able to learn and grow and develop. And when we brought John here to give you some relief, um, you know, I was, I was like, man, what's he gonna do now? What's the fire chief gonna do now with all this that he's learned, you know? And, uh, and I appreciate you, you know, John earlier mentioned, we don't want employees, we want, you know, people who are here for a career. And you've made it for, uh, being here and serving here for all these years. And, uh, we hope that you'll be here for a while, you know, you are wanted here. And we do appreciate you being here and sticking with us, and I'm sure other opportunities have come up or will come up for you. But thank you for the time, the investment that you put into Spring Lake and our citizens. A lot of people won't know the amount of work that you did behind the scenes and the amount of growing and learning that we as a board did while you were serving this role. So thank you very much, Jason.
Well, we're just gonna be real short, because I don't wanna get mad, just, I went, I, I wanna stay in his favor, so I'm just gonna say, um, one of the things that I said to you was, that we got a lot of fires to put out. And what you said was, I'm gonna fire, I put out fires.
Right.
And that's what you did. And I appreciate you, um, looking to death, um, I, I would do it all again, although maybe I'm not called as much, but thank you, Jason, seriously, I really appreciate you being here.
Well, they save the best for last. And I'm just gonna say, in conclusion, you've al- you've already said it, I agree, and thank you. We have an award to present to you, Jason W. Williams. The W stands for winner or wonderful, changeable. From the mayor and board of Alderman, because that's how long we've been waiting to give this to you. We had to, we had to trick him to get him here tonight, just so you guys. Uh, from the mayor and board of Alderman in recognition of outstanding service, dedication, and leadership as interim town manager, guiding integrity and vision during the period of transition to the town of Spring Lake uh, from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Williams, Jason, Chief, you're amazing, and we thank you so much. Please join me in giving him a round of applause. Present you with the award. We already get to the other floor.
Yes.
Yes. We, we already.
Yeah, I'm already here now.
Yeah, gotta get you out of the way.
Get in here. Mr. Sir.
What did they do? In the middle. Thank you. You're awesome. Right.
Uh, yeah, one, one, couple things. Uh, I, I told you guys before, up here, that, that, uh, I, I wouldn't have done that to look for you guys. You, you guys really helped me learn so much and maintain what we had to do. The attorney, I mean, I call him all the time, call him, kept me from, probably letting a lot of people out here. But, uh, one thing I do wanna thank you for is bringing John here, thank you so much for that. He, I still, you know, it's funny, but he still teaches me, I mean, I go in there and we sit down and talk. And I know how, how he, you guys have known this, how he talks to you.
Yeah.
You better pay attention, because he's, he's teaching you something you don't even know, but, but I do thank, he didn't have to do this, but thank you. I told you before, it wasn't, no, this is something that I wanted to do, and I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, hopefully unless you got too bad, but I think we're moving on a lot of that, so thanks.
Okay. Um, that's all I have, we'll now move on to Mayor's here.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have, uh, last week was the state Broncos homecoming. This week is the Spring Lake Middle School's homecoming, Thursday, October thirty-first. And we're gonna be doing trinkle treat to support our Spring Lake Broncos. So come on out, get your candy, and celebrate your homecoming with our middle school and our students. And, um, you can set up at two o'clock. Is that for anybody just to, to set up or you?
Awesome. What shall I do?
Mayor, uh, last, last time I kinda disappointed you by not having anything to bring you up. Well, today I got a lot of things that I'd like to address. One is we've got our cleanup that, that we're doing again. And that'll be eight AM to eleven at Southwoods Plaza. And, and Mayor, I would like to highlight that in this past year, we've done six cleanups where we took off six thousand four hundred pounds of debris from the roads of Spring Lake. That was not only alcohol bottles, beer bottles, cans, everything else, debris, a boat, that was, you know, from, from anything else. That's three tons, that's over three tons worth of trash, all done by seventy-one volunteers. They gave up one Saturday a month for three hours. So just imagine if we had more people out there cleaning up. So we'll be back at it this, this Saturday, eight AM in Southwoods Plaza. So anybody might come out and volunteer, clean up your, your town, your streets, your community. Uh, if you need volunteer hours, I'll be glad to sign a paper that you were out there, as long as you were out there, uh, cleaning up. So that's one. Two is our Veterans Day ceremony. Mayor, that, that's coming up Friday, November eighth at eleven AM. It's gonna be Stitchin' Time, it'll be at Fort Twelve, Main Street, mural unveiling. Commissioner Quasios will, will cover that a little more. The public is invited, everyone is invited to come out there. Uh, this will be a big event. Dr. Dickerhoff, when he goes big, he goes big. So if we have any volunteers that would like to come out there and, and set up and tear down to make this event wonderful. Uh, participation is, is encouraged, it's welcome. Please come out and help. Three is our Veteran of the Year. I'm excited about this, we, we've had two already, this will be our third. Uh, the announcement will be made at Stitchin' Time, and the honorary will be joining the likes of Sergeant Major Charles Miller and Montgomery Sergeant George Reed. So the next one, I feel is a very fitting person to be announced.
I thought Marvin, but he said he wouldn't.
Next, we've got the banner program. The banner program has been very successful this year, we've got thirty-two banners displayed up and down Main Street. So as you see, that, that kinda gives that little patriotism, that, that, that heart pumping through there. Thirty-two people were recognized this past year, including the mayor, that mayors was, was out there. Uh, after Memorial, after Veterans Day, the banners will come down. And the people can come right here to this room to get your banners, or if you need Steve Wang, his folks out there, so pull them down. But your banners will be here, and then take them home, clean them up, put them on your lovely wall, bring them back next year. And we're gonna start the banner program again, so it will have more than thirty-two banners going up and down next year. Let, let's build Main Street up with, with all the banners that we've got out here. The banners are for, for retirees, for, for veterans, for active duty. It, it is not just a Memorial Day thing, this, this will encompass Veterans Day, it will cover Memorial Day, as well as Armed Forces Day. So we'll have the banners out there, if you would like to get started with that for next year, it's not too, too early. Also, I'd like to highlight, uh, the Veterans Park. If anybody knew what Veterans Park looked like, two, two and a half years ago, there were twenty diseased trees out there. We had a platform out there where, where we kept replacing sand because it would wash out of there. Mr. Rory has done a yeoman's job out there. We've got the, the platform fixed, the benches are put back out there, the trees have been removed, the, the stumps have been ground. There's, there's ground that's being leveled off as much as we can level that off. We've got new lighting, we've got new electrical out there, we've got sidewalk, we've got, got all that going in there. We've got other things that are coming, so I might not steal the thunder off of that yet. But these are just things that have happened out there at Veterans Park. So next year, I, I'm looking forward to Memorial Day, that we have all the rest of things in place. So we have a Veterans Park that, that we can be proud of out there and utilize that park for, for its intended purposes. So I don't think I missed anything off there, but the, the walking path out there, Mr. Rory, is, is a wonderful touch. I can't wait to see what else we've got coming out there, so stay tuned. That's it for me, Mayor.
Commissioner Quasios?
Thank you, Mayor. So we have our Veterans Day ceremony coming up, and part of that is the Bureau mural unveiling. And, uh, starting tomorrow at nine AM, the painting is being started. So, uh, because of that, we are, we do have the option for slots for anybody, citizens or organizations that do wanna take a part in painting, uh, that can happen. If you are interested in doing that, uh, get with the town clerk. You'll just email clerk@townofspringlake.com to take your part in Spring Lake's future. I love that. And, uh, we do have an adopt a street program, so anybody who wants to adopt a street in Spring Lake for a hundred dollars. So anybody who wants to adopt a street in Spring Lake for a hundred dollars, you can and we'll put up a sign honoring your contribution and your organization or individual that wants to do that. So again, get with us if that's something you're interested in. We really would love help when it comes to cleaning and maintaining our property here in Spring Lake. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Chappell?
I have an update.
Mr. Manager?
I forgot to mention, there's a link. If you go to UNC Finance Center, they have a dashboard for all utility rates throughout North Carolina. For the five hundred utilities, you can compare rates for water, sewer, total consumption, recovery rates, finance rates, rate structures. It's really fascinating, the website. I don't have a link that I can share with you. UNC Financial Dashboard. And it'll get you there and you can now hit the, I may have mentioned it elsewhere. Other than that, I'll keep going.
Mr. Porter?
Just briefly, just thanking Jason again, I'll be very brief.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not give you.
No, 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 I just had.
You guys went through a lot. You're absolutely right. So, Jason, you had to come back to the podium.
No, no, I'll be brief. No, but it was just very, very interesting. I was first, and obviously the team, but obviously Joe Durham was here. And he was like, "Don't worry, Michael." Because I was like, "It's going to be kind of rough from what I've heard." You know, because y'all went through a lot. And y'all done great work. And Joe was like, "Oh, I'll be here for a while." And then he was like, "Peace." But Jason, man, you were great. So and partly that's been over, well over two years since I started. Obviously, very happy to have Mr. Rory. He was fantastic job. Anyways, that's just what I wanted to say. He was very good to work with, y'all all. That's it.
Those two were our resident warriors. They went to bed.
Put the pain on.
Oh, absolutely. Well, Matt and Clerk?
Nothing.
Well, with that being said, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.